I'll have to ask people not to talk, because you could sit in here or not one of them. If you want to hear anything, you should have one person speak.
We're not again.
What do we get paid for? You gentlemen? Sorry about that. And our meeting minutes are being recorded, so that makes it more important. Begin the meeting with a motion to accept the minutes of the prior meeting, the name will be changed. We had a motion to accept. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All fair. I guess that is done. All right, we have one public hearing. Four items, one new business, which means we might get back in time for that. We'll see. Public hearings, if I, I am.
Yeah.
Well, I almost got it.
It's in bad spot.
No, I know maybe we can't do that public hearing. But I would point out, the reason we have a public hearing is to hear from you. This will be the only time we have to speak. We need your information, if you're a neighbor, or somebody knows something, or since they have the question, you have a right to do that. We only ask that when you speak, say your name so we can record it. Not mandatory, but for our minutes, it's a good idea to know who speaks. Go ahead.
Good evening, Joe Colley representing the sub-ads side tonight. This is a proposed school project on Old Wood 52. It's a 27 acre stake of parcel, which on the front of the property, close to the state roots, but it's all state of 52, proposing to do a school. This is a, it's in a rec zoning where it's schools allowed, subject to special use, etc. The school is supposed to be a two-story plus a basement. It will hold out to 60 students and also has sleeping accommodations, dormitory for 32 hours students. Water and sewer on the side are private, there's no town water or sewer design, so it'll be a private well. And a septic system, so that's up to form. And a full engineering plan will be coming forward next year. Driveways, there's a driveway that falls, falls quite across Murphy Road. And there's another optional driveway that they can do at the other end of the property, which starts to be decided by them if they want it or not. But the project will work with the front driveway. There are 16 parking spaces, which should be more than enough for the use. There's any contact integrated for the garbage. Basically, it's the product.
Make me sure. Does anybody have a question?
So.
Anybody have a question, Charlie?
What about the public?
This is the public part. Raise your hand, I'll call on you, young lady, the first. Your name, please.
Mary Adams. So this is going to draw on my show, oh no, you've got that false. This is an old hotel site.
Correct.
Yeah. And how many neighbors will be clear cut for that building site?
Five hundred acres. But it's a 27 acre piece of property, 27.86, almost 28 acres. Only this container will be cleared, rather than fully untouched.
And the entrance is on 52, Sam?
It's Old Wood 52, this is my road, 52, on there, this is a program. This is a whole city.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is William Epstein. I'm from the Yeshiva community, World Park Road. This is just a few comments. There's a, one of the families, it's a very big supporter of the school, is making a wedding this evening. Many people went to the wedding on behalf, because of the school, to show support for the school. So a lot of people went, but a lot more people would have been here tonight to show support for this project. But I think I can speak on behalf of everybody, you know, in the, around the Yeshiva community. We're all unanimously in support of the school. We need it. I'm a parent at the school. You know, without this school, our option is to send for religious destruction down, you know, down, downstate, even to Rock and Counter, to Lakewood, New Jersey, etc. This is a very big, almost a necessity for the growing community around the Yeshiva. And as I said, we're all unanimously, unanimously supportive of the school, even those who don't have their own children in the school. But everybody is supportive of Rabbi Gurelik and everything that they're doing to bring the school to the, to the community. So that's on behalf of the, you know, the, as I said, the Jewish Yeshiva community. I just wanted to point out that in terms of the general community, there's a, there's been a renewed, I was just doing some research this afternoon, about the reduction in crime, several important studies, I saw that a study in the Manhattan Institute of Policy, which is based in Manhattan. They did a meta-analysis that there is, 75% of studies that are looking at the relationship between faith-based schooling and crime, find that the higher level of faith schooling that we have in the community or the state, the lower the crime rate. So this is not only a boon for us as the religious world class community, the Jewish community, but I think in general for the county, for the center of our town and for the county. The more we support faith-based schooling, the better our communities become. And, 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 you know, it's important for everybody, of course, we have a great public school system. But also, we do ask, you know, the board to extend it all courtesy and kindness, as they have in the past, for the project.
Thank you. And help us to speak. I would point out for those who came for it, that the Plankwood will ask questions later. It's number three on our regular agenda, we don't generally ask very much sort of public. If you're interested, stay for it, it won't be too long.
Mary Adams, I have a question about, even though these are private levels, and he has the demand on the water supply and the hatchet work. And I know that Sullivan County is the new analysis of all the water assets in Sullivan County, and I believe we're a big part of that. So I'm just wondering if we could consider the strain, because we do have nine developments already approved, a lot to show, right? And this is just up the road. So I just want to keep that out there for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm not doing this, I'm talking to the World Park Public hearing. We've been far open. If anybody has comments that isn't here, we can send them along. Yes, sir, your name, please?
The Anna Wilson. First of all, I'd echo everything that I've absolutely just said. I personally was negatively impacted, adversely impacted by the fact that she didn't have her own facilities, probably the facility that I'm yourself. And last time I talked with the ninth grader, I was finally able to send it to this school, because for me, it doesn't work if the school doesn't have facilities that it needs. I just sent a student who, months, yeah, a ninth grader, a month, you know, 13-year-old kid, born in Barthelow. It's not, not ideal for him or, in many cases, it's not ideal for him. I just wanted to back, oh, I understand, and it's that, it's, we feel it's, it's very important for the, for us. And I think it's going to be very positive impact on the entire community, on the entire town, I believe. I just wanted to respond to what I've, Mary, you said, ever? The water impact is certainly very important, I mean, even for the school itself, you know, to ensure that there's a proper water supply. I just wanted to point out, the school's already functioning. So the demand on, on, unless, unless the other location is taken from other sources, which I'm not aware of. But the school is functioning already, so the water demand is already, is already being used in the other area. In, 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 within, now, in the temporary quarters that they're having now. I just want the, the problem be empty when they move, when they move to this location. Right, they're not going to use both locations anymore.
And everything.
Right, I just wanted to also mention.
Sir, what was your last name?
Edelson.
Edelson, thank you.
Anybody else? Let's try to closing the public participation in the World Park. If you have written comments, that'll be open yet. So, onto our regular agenda. Name number one, the plant needs subdivision. Continue to hear, one thing about subdivision. Note on my head, you hear 191.6 progress, this is supposedly a cluster subdivision.
Correct, maybe make it help on, kind of, for me, for glass mitts, a little bit, people may be able to make it tonight. So this is a proposed coastal subdivision, it's 192 acre parcel on the Axon district. Axon basically has minimum parcel requirements of 10 acres. There's a conventional subdivision that was prepared a while ago, which showed that we can do 30 lots as a conventional subdivision. And now it was reduced to a, to a fourth subdivision, so the front plan shows 13 lot sizes from Chad Road, covering the development data for approximately 34 acres, each with a well and septic system. The coastal lots, and this is a little bit of our life site plan, or of that area, so you can see what it is. So now it's, it's on a large site, and I have the 13 lots, which are going to be clustered, that amount of 34 acres. Coastal lot sizes ranges from 1.8 acres to 22 acres, where the biggest lots, meaning number, lot number five, at 91 acres, because they have a greater value. Though it requires a conservation plan showing at least 30% of the property is inside the conservation space. There is about 158 acres, so 82% of it will be part of the conservation space, since there's a lot of steep slope and wetlands on the ground. So that's what we're doing, that's what we're performing in April and May on the 30 lots, and that good results for the areas, so they are, they're suitable to have their septic systems there. So what, we're asking for the board to certify this, so have a public meeting at the next meeting, and send it out to the public, to the, to the other end of the map, John, for you to. So, gotta know.
But it's a different one. Yeah.
Yeah. Can I add a question?
Sure.
Thank you. Why is it, this is a cluster?
Yes.
You're having different sized lots, meaning different people will be responsible for the conservation easements, the main, main. Why not do it the more simple way, if you have the bulk of the property, which is, is not time to use, put into other, association, it would be a lot simpler, to put it all together and do. The law on clusters is a tough thing we have, it's 10 pages of text, unreadable text. And it's a very difficult thing to accomplish, as far as we do, have to do 100 unit D plus to go, as far as the law, it's complicated. It seems to me, it suggests that, not mandatory, it suggests that you do smaller sized lots, two acres perhaps, whatever, and then put the bulk of it in trust to the town. It's a thought, perhaps somebody else would like to speak to that against the floor.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the traditional idea behind the cluster subdivision, is to have the small lots clustered toward the road, and then to have the rest of it being, intervention easement will permanently be protected. I noticed today that one of the joint landowners is the city of Newark. So even though it's outside of the watershed boundary, you never know, DPP affires not land, but also easements to protect the water supply. It's pretty close, you know, to the watershed, because it's not within the city watershed boundary. So that's, that's something to look at. But I think the recommendation was maybe to have a work session with Glenn, Adam, who's been here today, that he did draft a memo that I believe he's going to send out tomorrow. He had a lot of questions on the conventional subdivision layout, and as you know, the conventional subdivision layout is kind of the basis for the, the lot yield, how many lots you can get with the cluster.
Right.
And obviously, there's a lot of constraints, right, steep slopes, wetlands, a lot of those. So I, I think we need to spend a little bit more time on the conventional subdivisions, so that we all get consensus on what the actual, like, maximum lot yield is, before we cluster them closer, you know, to the, at least, I think is the general trend. So it might be premature to go through a public hearing, but that's, yeah, and something to work out some of those details, and it would be helpful, I think, if you had, you know, you and Glenn and others kind of sit around the table and really kind of dive, continue to come.
I mean, this is the conventional subdivision layout.
Yeah.
It will probably cost, I don't know, 10 times as much to do that as the cost of subdivision plan, to say that.
Yeah.
Well, it's something that is doable, I mean, yes, there are a lot of constraints, but it is a doable subdivision, I mean, we can discuss it.
Yeah.
And again, I like what I said last month, I wish we'd get these talents fairly limited process, I mean, this was presented before. I would appreciate that in the future, from the, you know, if we're going to get comments this morning, so we don't have to come to two meetings and apply out.
Maybe on your own, I can summarize some of the, if you like, please, you know, it's probably.
That, you know, what's wrong?
Okay.
And you'll get the memo. You don't want the, the, the plan that we can, we can do.
So I, I actually had a conversation with the landowner, and he wanted to have, he took, took his idea of not to have everything just as a separate lot. He wanted to have, I guess, when he saw some people, it's like, oh, I'm selling this, I'll bake a lot, instead of a two acre lot. But there's nothing really that they can do, I mean, as you can see, it's very steep in there, and this is, this is wetland, so there's really nothing that they can do on that land. But I'll, I'll have another conversation, then, and bring it up again and see if it's something that.
You might want to actually do it, now, to have survey, property line.
You'll need markers, demarcating where the entity that's non-buildable is.
We're doing one vocator, which would be much simpler, I think.
But then, we, we do it to that, and I'll have a conversation with the owner, and I'll see if he's available to do that, or if he has any other reason why I want to do that.
If you're over our workshop, and we'll be here, perhaps, for example, the United School. Anybody have any questions? It's trying to be a long endeavor, you know, if you, for our district, read the 10 pages of books that we have to do.
The only thing I'd like to say is this, has he considered fire protection? Because God Road is not.
Right, so there's none, it's not a man. Right, the roads will have, I mean, everything here will be built to whatever fire codes require, New York State fire codes, it's a single family owned, with no town waters, who, they'll all have their own septic. The roads in this, in this, both these two cul-de-sacs will be wider than the town roads leading to it.
The other question that I would have brought up, was the road shows the 50 easement in the road, was that proposed to be dedicated to the town, or is there an HOA to operate? No, the, in the development, or in?
Oh, okay.
Who's going to make the payment on that road?
It's most likely to be an HOA, because I guess you'll have to have nature. Or, or the driveway is.
Well, last ever proposal to dedicate it to.
That's what we want them to know. Is the town want to take them?
No.
Yeah, I think, Joel, one of the concerns also, just to kind of give you a heads up, is I don't know if you remember the tier road cluster subdivision, it wasn't that long ago. But the subdivision law basically says if you don't have two means of, of access, you know, you can't have a single street longer than 500 feet. So in the conventional subdivision layout, you would have to take that into account, I'm not sure if you took that into account, that was in Mr. Agnes' comments. So it's just, there's a lot of just, it's easier to sit around the table with the plans and, and kind of look at the, you know, the access and the street map part, and just, you know, make sure that we're. I think the main concern was that, I think everybody's in favor of the idea of clustering, you know, the lots closer to the room. It's just from a legal standpoint, getting consensus on establishing the maximum lot yield, so that, you know, we know how many lots you can legally, you know, sort of cluster. I think that's really the main issues.
Okay. I think we can have a work session, we'll, we'll get a work session scheduled, and hopefully we'll get it together all worked out. Thank you.
Thanks. You have the next one, but you have one.
All of the next ones, you all, much like.
This was during one of your talks. Yeah, I was.
The maximum lot.
At this point, we really have nothing to do with, but Mike would make it, Mike, he has a case for this, so I'm just following in, and I'll try to do my best. So this has been a ton of work a couple times, with the public meeting, it was a council meeting that was spun up too, about a month ago. This is a 24.47 acre site, that was totally able to, four lane, and they came back with a plan, which is a dormitory building. I believe that everything has been worked out, and the project is ready for approval, there's an evidence ceremony. I don't know if there's any specific questions on the board and that.
Well, the last thing was that the swimming pool had to be raised above the flood zone by the Hudson, like, the.
So, the pool was changed, it is above the flood.
No, what's the story with the sidewalk?
The story with the sidewalk is the county, the DOT has a command of sidewalks, never come on the sidewalk the last time too. I mean, as you know, this would be a sidewalk to nowhere. I don't want to.
Somewhere.
We've got, there are so much.
I think when we discussed this, that we were going to ask for a design of the sidewalk, but possibly not construction, so it's at least incorporated.
You can't just go in a sidewalk, sometimes nowhere, you know, nowhere, but if you don't know, maybe the.
But we started, we started a sidewalk all around, by now, you know.
That's right, but, sorry, they've got a cemetery on one side, here.
And you got, and you got a bomb.
One of us can leave the trip, that place for someone.
Which, which down, the next, kind of, the next lot down would be built, you know, before you know it, you've got 20, there are 35 people walking on the sides of the road, guys.
Some of these.
Just sort of one of that, there is room to put in a sidewalk, so will I have room to put in a sidewalk, if it's fully wanted in the future, it, it can be done.
No, no, we put it in position to designate it.
Is this going to be a, or Smith's?
I'll leave one.
Two stories?
Yes.
Children sleeping?
Yes.
It takes 20 minutes to get to a, by, not, minimum, about 20 minutes to get to a.
I guess, sure. Okay.
Sure. We'll have to have, we'll have to have sprinkles system, but we'll have to be 5A, so it all has to be New York State fire code, that, you know, probably how you have to fire it to such a boat.
Personally, as a, as a grandfather, okay, I would like to see it made out of masonry, to protect the children, okay? You have a fire in the wooden structure, it takes 20 minutes to get there, okay? We ain't saving the children. And I don't want, and I don't want to see anybody's child.
Sure, I, I understand, we all want to be safe, we want to build safe structures, and the fire code, New York City don't have it established based on history. And they, they have the specific biting requirements, and sprinkles system requirements, fire alarm requirements, because, what you said, you know, we want to be safe. So there, there's a, there's a possibility, I think there's, most likely have to be built as a type A construction, not type B. But whatever will be done, will be done in accordance with the New York State laws.
Because we have, we have no paid fire truck, so we're all, we're all volunteers. And, for example, my house is a mile from the firehouse, and if there's a late night fire, by the time I get up, with my pants on, with my computer on, get in the car, get to the firehouse, you got 15 minutes. That doesn't mean enough 15 minutes to get to the school, you got a, you got a fire that you can't control. That's my, that's my concern.
Don't like to have a conversation with the owner, so consider that, but, you know.
I would like that to be for two.
If I may ask, what is the provision for two provision, right? You're going to be, how are they going to divide 24/7?
I'm not sure if that wasn't really particularly about this project, but typically, we just type, and I have, I have been two years in a Yeshiva dormitory. And there's typically a person that all night walk, just walking up and down the dormitory, but I would assume the same thing would be ahead, but.
No, you're beside the side, it's something, stay there at night.
I don't know, there's a set of signs, where I was, I was trialing Canada for two years. They had the person that was there, just, you know, supervised at night, and then had a separate job, he was just like, all night, you know, a couple minutes up there, which was a two-story, so it's up and down, up and down, you know.
Often, often, often Yeshivas will have a separate room for an older, in, yeah, usually that's, all the time that both individual have a phone and a car, in case, so we have, you know, students, you can call, you know, the principal or authorities, that takes.
Yes, right. That's, you have an issue, but.
I think probably the way to handle it would just be having a condition that there will be proper supervision and have that as just a condition for. We would ask for business parents, or, or, how, right, you think it's some, similar thing for stabbing. Yeah, I think that.
Well, all the parents want to, they also don't want their kids up there alone.
We might get to have a special use permit on here, we can put something in there, where I've been headed.
Yeah, I think that would be worth doing, just as a condition of inspection, permit, and have, just a plan of our supervision. And that can look any number of ways, just, you know, something that demonstrates the kids aren't going to be in there a while, basically, so I think that would be a good step. You know, you can always call it an operation plan that way, because you have to know, and how they're going to cook in the oven, and, and, I would just call it an operation plan, and ask for all those things for the, for the.
I think even putting a time limit on the special terminal or renewal, so that way, once it's constructed and after the first year of operation, you can review and make sure that you address any issues that.
And also a question.
They have to build NFPR standards, for, for, more or less, for a dormitory, or whatever they're, they're, they're going to call, but the deal is to make sure that there's more than this penthouse system, not my safety, the regular commercial system. And the deal is, a lot of these places, they do not get in every year and do the maintenance on these systems. And that is the critical problem, when we get to a fire that's been helping in touch for two years, it's a problem. Well, they need, they need the, I, I, how do you say, they need the inspection process to be done, so that it's always up to date. And with the newest, latest, and greatest, so.
Fire, I, I thought the insurance company required to get it. It's not the insurance company.
So, though they call, no. If they don't, if they don't.
Tell the New York. If they, they got, they got a problem.
That's what I'm saying.
Just like the school. Don't, don't, you don't, you don't.
That's what I'm saying, if they, if you're a school, they have to construct here.
Okay.
Thinking of chances. All right, we have to do a negative deck. Now, this is one where we.
Dylan, did you want them to do this, read A to Z?
That would be part of a.
Action in the narrative.
Built, it's built into.
Yeah, that's in one of the terms, that in March of 2019, this project was initially built, as far as the school goes, and the board, so community agencies, that one. So this is basically take it back and, and applying that, just to the additional impacts as far, far secret goes.
Let me read the draft.
That's better than what I said, yeah.
Well, we're going to begin to guess, but it's only one page, so it's a citation. Whereas by resolution dated, it's still 2024, Plankwood saw the state agency status of the project, which contains construction of two-story, 80, any student, building the footprint of 9,000, so, so I can go over that. Whereas resolution dated today, today, Plankwood is designated state agency by the, for the environmental review, we're going to vote on that as part of this. Whereas the Plankwood is conducting a review at the part of the constitution, the secret law, of making sure. Whereas in March 2019, Plankwood previously issued a negative declaration, personally to Sika, with proposed moving, very signed approvals. And therefore, other, we've done it before, there's no real change in the environment, so there isn't anything much to add on it. A few more students that, that did. The Plankwood, therefore, Plankwood now hereby reaffirms its prior determination to, to the state agency status, review the project in order to secret. Plankwood hereby determines, based on the environmental assessment and review, the project is consistent with the negative deck that was issued in March of 2019. Reading the Plankwood's lines of project, will not have, is the important one, to have any significant adverse impact on the environment that were previously not addressed or were inadequate to be addressed. The proposed project will not have a significant impact on the environment, negative declaration is therefore undoubtedly, chairman of the, what's the right to sign, resolution effective immediately. This is anything important. This is anything important.
That, that was the spread.
Exactly, so, you tell me, can I make a motion for the negative stat? Play your second, all second, all favor? Any hints? Yeah, it's happening, that's the negative stat. We don't know if we're speaking English, okay, for those of you who have, we're gonna, we, we use shortcut. Uh, you should say requires environmental review of every action we do, at secret, the environment quality we do have. And that's what we just did. Okay, we need to talk about the site plan itself and the special permit. We were discussing sidewalk, or lax sidewalk, or, or, uh, more commonly done, we make them, you know, position for it, design, and also they, uh, given this town the right to build it. Anybody wanna talk any more on that? To me, it's maybe, if you put in a sidewalk that you can require, it's, the sidewalk from nowhere to, to nowhere and it gives a liability, it's gotta be, uh, the end of the winter, somebody trips on it, whatever, uh, it's just one extra thing.
He said the state wants it.
No, the state suggested.
Okay. But we were talking about, since I've been on here, we're talking about the projects like, they said, what he said, on Law eleven, he started with one, I said that, what it sidewalks. Now, there's so many going. And you're talking about, they, they, no matter what, they still have a responsibility on their property and a liability on their property, if somebody falls and it's not maintained that way, they're gonna have the same kind of liability, I think.
Well, let me read to you what the state wrote, so we know the word. Uh, New York State Department of Transportation recommends, as the town requires construction of sidewalks on the site frontage along Route forty-two, well, as pedestrian connection to the site. This requirement would be consistent with the goals of the town for comprehensive plan as well as state, local initiatives improve pedestrian safety and mobility, and development is pursued in the car. That's what the state, they recommended, they didn't, they, we had to do it.
I will say, the state has come to the town and they are looking to, they, they started, they did the Kiamisha stretch of forty-two. And they're proposing to do from Brickman to Woodburn, widening in sections, uh, big, you know, drainage projects, so probably it's different people who are doing the reviews and the planning, and maybe they're gonna need to widen this road, so part of the approval, if they do a design, they would, we would want DOT approval, but it might be, they might have to work it out in a few years, 'cause they're planning on that within five years, so, that would be something to consider.
You think the right of way is better, more flexible, with the state coming along and doing?
Part of the condition, since it's a state road, would be that they approve the design and location of it.
I'll have to say that.
So, they're, they're, they are putting them in elsewhere too, they put them in now by stewards down there.
And the state, that's part of the project, and they're gonna do the next stretch, so.
I think the state does their state highways.
That's what they're.
Streets policy, they, they have to put in pedestrian, so you're just, you're rolling the dice, you know, in the meantime, 'cause who knows, you know, when they might get to that stretch, but, you know, when they do end up improving that portion of the roadway most likely put in sidewalks, but that could be ten, fifteen years from now.
So, let, let's put something in that, that's, uh, provisions for the sidewalks, that they have to put them in and the right of way, whatever they need. Can we put it in as one of the stipulations?
Yeah, they gotta know how much will be taken, right, the, the state will tell them that, give them an idea, possibly.
Well, they talked about turn lanes, so there is several roads there, maybe they would need to widen the road for turn lanes for uh, gamble and some of the other roads there, so, they, they might need taking, and they said, once the bridge is complete, that that was within a, it's in the queue for, for within five years to, to do this work project, so, they've already started doing the drainage work through town here, so it's already, the project is open and started, so it's it shouldn't be an imaginary project.
And they already started.
And they started, yeah, well, that's starting September. Uh, yes, I believe so. 'Cause we're looking at doing a joint plan to replace all the water and sewer in the road at the same time.
There's an update?
That's the plan.
Are they going bigger?
They did increase the size of the pipes crossing the river from the well field, but then it stops at the intersection of Brickman. But the, the state did replace the water mains in that intersection already for us.
So, it's just another.
So, we're looking at it continuing, so that is, it's, it's a real project at some point.
Makes sense to do all at once.
Right, and the provisions of right of way.
We'll put that, we'll put that in.
And the stipulation.
Thank you, Aiden.
Yes.
Maybe if you're trying to read. A little off, maybe you can't hear.
Yeah.
Aiden, thank you.
All right, so we have the, uh, site plan, review and special permit resolution, same project and header that we just went through on the deck, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, so we've got an existing school building, related site improvements that are, have previously issued special permits in the deep district zone. Um, which does allow dormitories, fraternity and sorority houses as permitted uses. Um, for this, we've got our standard conditions, which is just adherence to any and all changes requested by the planning board members, Fallsburg staff, planning board attorney, town engineer, town planner, or other technical consultants. Implementation of all mitigation measures, uh, determined in secret, payment of all fees, offer of dedication to the town of land or easements for roads and utilities. And then we get into our site-specific conditions, with the first one being, the project involves development within an area of special flood hazards, so a hundred-year flood plain, as defined by chapter one thirty-seven of the Town of Fallsburg Code. Pursuant to this section, a flood plain development permit is required for all construction and other developments to be undertaken in this special flood hazard area. Second condition is, site plan must be modified to graphically depict the required front yard inside and wing yard, landscated buffer setback areas. Let these buffers be clearly labeled on the plan, site plan must be revised relative to the requirements of section three-ten dash five-one-three D regarding density of dormitory beds. Uh, in accordance with section three-ten five, dash five-point-three-three, sidewalks, the planning board requires the installation of sidewalks on the frontage of the development, any other connections, so we're gonna change that.
Planning board requires the reservation of a strip of land to be placed in.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, approved of the two things, installation, sidewalks on the frontage, subject to review and approval by the town engineer, Plankwood attorney, said easement once approved, you know, set forth herein, shall be depicted on the final site plan to, to the project. I have a slightly later addition.
Okay, yeah, I must have, part of it to be one of the earlier ones then. And then we've got adherence to any and all changes requested by responding fire districts, I don't believe the fire district gave any comment at this point, but. Yeah, I think it went out, there's just no comment. Then, the final condition I had, there's no site disturbance or construction shall take place until Speedy's general permit for stormwater discharges or construction activity is issued by the D E C. Um, and then here, just as an additional one that we discussed, we would also have a condition that there'd be an operation plan that includes supervision of the students that are in the dormitories.
Neil, correct all that stuff you talked about, and just.
And I have a question. Hundred-year flood plain, is this dormitory in the hundred-year flood plain? Or is that adjacent to it? Okay, that's what I was, just wanted to make sure.
We had previously done this, but there was an request, that there'd be an amendment to the, um, special permit, which had limited them to, uh, as far as usage and hours. We had, we had previously put in because of the camp situation, that they could have the school open all summer. But the, the operating hours moved from, uh, from up to midnight, and then it's from six A M. on. And I can strike that provision, so they can, they're twenty-four seven, they've got a dorm now. And then, so it can be used all year round.
We're allowed to speak outside.
Not speak outside, and also the, operate, the, the purity message, and one year review of the operating. An operating. Do you have any comments on that?
Well.
Except, the site-specific conditions, the rest of it, quite a plate. Uh, comment for the. Nobody? Motion? For, for the site plan and special use.
I'll make that one.
Five seconds? Got a second? All favor? Any hints?
Uh, do we have a rendering of the building?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Haven't seen it, I don't know.
I don't think I have it in the file. All right, so they're done.
Thank you. Never seen it before.
Well, well, where is that hat?
He wasn't supposed to.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't supposed to hear that, so I don't see it here.
He, he was on loan.
See, you got my guy, now, um, you're done, one nice.
Hi, school. During the view of the site plan review, to construct the school building and sweeping combination, already seen zone. Nobody wants to move somebody, no, you can't have.
There's very, there's very nothing weird that, uh, we want likewise, right, uh, hopefully the next meeting will have a new site plan uh, submitted to, to planning board and keep stock for review, uh, along with the SWIP, and then come back for final approval, please, if there's any logistics to be prepared, I asked consultants that, uh, if there's any questions, so, anything does. I can be helpful, so let me think of other solutions on that.
Well, I have a question, so, which includes, no, I'm asking. There's a section in our law on institutional uses, pretend if I appoint a, yes, a lot of questions on operating, and so on. Is that applicable, applicable to this?
The additional sections are not, so, here, um.
Does state schools as an institutional use? I think.
Is this the one that I thought, yeah, we had an agreement on this one already, I thought, I didn't. Yeah, I didn't bring the memo with me or review it, 'cause I thought we were all settled on that issue, but, um, 'cause there's the, yeah, there's the additional sections in three-ten, most of the point, and that, uh, section, but that would not apply here. 'Cause it did have, yeah, it did have the carve-out for schools generally. So, here, this would apply as a school, so I, the additional, uh, just application and, uh, burden that that has on it would apply here.
Yeah, that's not everything. All right, can I, how more you can do?
But with this pool, we don't have enough.
Not sure.
You heard him, Mike, well, I don't know.
They're down the block from the, Kempis Suboratorals, fifty-five, fifty-six.
Okay, so that's where next, there's a pool, the dorm, for you to get ready to build now, right?
Not right next, not.
Not right next, but.
It's down the block, a hundred feet.
A hundred feet up the road. Oh, it just happened there, is that year-round already?
Excuse me?
Is it going year-round?
Did you say you have these year-round? No, we have what else?
Well, you see what I'm saying, the sidewalk, uh, that, that one, this is gonna turn, uh, a year-round place there, what can be added?
Just, just be right, they, we, we were.
You're gonna move out, someone else is gonna move in. That's what's gonna happen.
Not necessarily, not necessarily, but ninety-nine percent, ninety-nine percent. I would, I would actually just put it, put it on a very small list, because if they had the camp, as here, they did not want to let the yeshiva use it.
Okay.
In fact, they told you.
Does the town, does the town know to run a, a schooler, first of all?
Sure.
Yeah, I think that, let's stick to the application at hand.
Oh, I just wanna know this one, that's all, right, I mean.
So that, so that, that campus, they actually did refuse them quite a few times.
Okay.
And after, that's higher up than they, than the user.
Thank you, yeah, it's, we're, we're focused on building here, so.
So, I don't think, so, again, from what I heard, your community, your community, you're hoping for that, that, put them for them. I think maybe you should make a proposal, because sixty kids, no.
I'm wanting to, uh, the Wells, mainly the BoH, to submit a proposal, uh, a location plan for, uh, approval, before you come, hopefully, get that, before you come back, that usually doesn't take too long for the location. And then the subject will be a Speedy's permit, so, I haven't seen any of the testing or design yet, but. So that'll have to be submitted, so it's.
Definitely have it up, that, that, uh, will be submitted.
And we're still waiting on the two thirty-nine, so, hoping to have that by Saturday, but, still got a couple days.
And Joel, just touch base with Adam, I, I think he had said that, you know, he's still waiting for responses to his comment memo from, from March. I know Mike said that some of that was already incorporating to revised plans, and.
Again, I like what you know.
Yeah, and I know, Keen and Arthur also had a discussion about some of the comments, you know, like the institutional use and, and whether or not those would apply, so some of the comments may be um, I know, I've been pointing, but just touch base, just to make sure that we covered everything that we put in.
And I know, I'm ready, moving right along.
Thank you.
Well, you know, Charlie, you said, I think.
Should get him a nameplate like everybody else.
Thank you, sir, and madam.
Have a good night.
The seventy-one unit, uh, two, uh, two plus half, and it's only like two hundred and lots of little, up by the power. We were, we were, category one, oh, two, right above, not sure, right, right above the, uh, post-up.
Yeah, it's not even four, this is where it's posted, this.
Yeah, and which one's been, handed out to Kevin.
So, the embers is like, as the trimmer said, it's a seventy-one project, I'm feeling old, and I'm a little on four. And also has a commission for one of, uh, seventy-one, uh, seventy-one, uh, building, supported down. But a lot of back and forth with it down board, so as part of this, uh, project, we need to have a, uh, zone change and boundary line adjustments for the commercial, 'cause, uh, the commercial building, as, as it is now, it's not all in the B zoning district. Uh, unfortunately, it is in the H I zoning district, so we have to go out of zone line adjustment. And also, fortunately, the paddock was outside of the water district, and, uh, that has to be extended into be included in the water district, so there was a lot of negotiations over the last couple of years, uh, about this project. There was an agreement signed with, and I wore the bare pound from three, and that's when the project started moving again. It was another public meeting in November of twenty-three, uh, a form of response to the public ballots have been submitted, uh, with this month's submission, there will then reach balance from the public. Um, so, right now, we're looking for, we're not looking for any action reports, I, only the board have an input, but, uh, the way the town board previous administration had is, with a district extension, that we have an agreement with the town, and then we can finish the site plan approval, then come back to or to formally, uh, complete the water district extension and zone change. So, what we're looking for essentially is for, we have the next meeting, uh, again, the, the consultants can prepare the resolutions for that and so that we can tie up any loose ends and get a conditional approval. And so that we can tie up any loose ads and get a conditional approval.
What are you looking for?
I think that, there's more to it.
Now I'm saying it, with uh.
Okay.
But what you're running into, this has been out a long time. Uh, we, if we talk about anything further, we're gonna have to do, do the environmental. And that's gonna be a project that we don't want to do, because there is any more, project means he asks, we go and expenses, so we've, we've been out, we've been doing this so long. Since the public hearing, we've been months. And there are some timelines involved, and one of the requests I have is just to develop for the writing, gives us a waiver on the uh timeline. You voice out any more intelligence than I can do next?
Yeah, so I, I think one of the big issues that popped up looking at Mike's memo, there seems to be a misunderstanding on capacity, so I know Mike thought there was capacity set aside on this one, but there isn't. So that's really written, I mean, there's obviously the traffic issue, which is the maybe it's going to be the traffic funds, but then as far as the water goes, there's nothing in the hopper yet, the town and, you know, Ken and A, they're spending a lot of time trying to find water. But because of that, there's nothing on the horizon that we can do a conditional deck, so it creates a situation where either we have to do an EIS, which is gonna basically end up saying that there's no water, and that's gonna be likely an impossibility to move forward because of Seaker or to, you know, hold the project up. Um, but you know, our thought was that it made sense to just set a work session on this one, so we can put our heads together and see if there's a way to uh, you know, come up with a plan moving forward, you know, as far as timing. Uh, just uh to give time for more water to be found and to just keep the projects moving forward as it can in, in the areas that it can, so it's kind of a a difficult dance that we're, we're looking to do.
And Joel, the only action that the board can take tonight, helping you look for, for action is that this project's been kicking around since two thousand nineteen, alright, so just to refresh everybody of, of the last time that this was here, it was back in November, we had a public hearing. Wasn't the first public hearing, the reason why we had a public hearing is because there was so much time had elapsed between the first public hearing and when they came back. Um, they came back with the updated law for PAF in October. That was sent out for um, uh, lead agency designation to the already involved interest agencies. When we had the public hearing on, uh, in the beginning of November, that thirty year, uh, thirty day comment period had yet expired. So technically, the board at this point can designate themselves as lead agency as kind of the next secret step. Um, but it's really important to state for the record, because it was, it was said numerous times by A at the public hearing. It's reported in the minutes that there is no capacity, water capacity reserved in this project. Even though there was an agreement in principle. Right, so it's a so much for, for, so, at any event, there's that, and then there's the traffic. Um, A must comment about, uh, most of the comments, the board's extensive public comments, uh, and there was a really new, long night that night. And most of it was about water and it was about traffic. Um, in Mike's comments, he also mentioned that the traffic report was reviewed by the town's um consultant, which it was. Um, but he had several substantive comments about trip generation, about the intersections that were examined, about the fact that the cumulative impacts of the traffic of not all of the eleven developments and lock shelter were taken in. And I know Steve Mafia responded to Morgan's letter, but I don't think Morgan had a chance or was, you know, instructed to you know, review that and basically sign off to say, you know, traffic is not a problem. So I think between water and traffic, there are still, you know, a number of kind of substantive environmental issues that need to be looked out, so you know, as Dylan said, it probably makes sense just to have a work session, so we all get on the same page and figure out what, you know, the next steps in the review might be.
Okay, so um, can you be sure that uh? Uh, also DOT, one of the councils about DOT, DOT did, did send a letter of uh, no litigation, now.
Right, but even though, even though no litigation is required, they're very concerned about uh inclusive cues at that uh lightning shop, lock shelter, so. Um, there's definitely issues that um, that need to be.
They did submit this report tonight, so.
Sounds good.
Also, the uh, two thirty nine, I think in December was incomplete, so I know the engineers are far enough along to send that back in, that one makes sense.
So at the very least, the board can formally declare themselves lead agency, and then we can kind of continue with.
Well, because we have no water, we have no water for the uh, for the annual.
That's not the way it works.
I, I hear you, but why can't we take a lead agency on something that we can't give?
No, we're taking lead agency by the water mental.
The lead agency establishes the fact that we don't have the water, we have to do lead agencies to, to.
Yeah, the lead agency is just the town planning board basically saying, we are the people that are gonna be in charge of coordinating this.
Do you call it, uh, Mr. Jackson or Mr. Jackson?
I believe it's almost everybody's kind of under the assumption that it's. Yeah.
Alright, so uh, you may have a question for the if we didn't establish that, I'm Mr. Jackson.
I'll make the vote, too.
For a second. We have a quiet floor.
Okay, so I guess we'll have a work session scheduled and uh, we'll take it from there.
Yeah, the one other thing, I, you know, what happens is we get into all the detail of the road work and the water and so on, sometimes we don't get to the front of it. Uh, I've been looking at the site plan, the latest one, I perhaps I missed me something, but I was looking at the commercial area, and if you look at the commercial area and the parking, you know you have pretty open parking lot, facing one of the towns, pretty busy road, I think that uh they might want to start looking for landscaping. Something, something better on that than, as always see. Early, but we get in place sometimes, we really too, really too long.
Yeah, we, we didn't discuss this at previous meetings, about moving that back, which didn't only affect the stone wall and that one of the area.
Right, it took me islands with trees and it took me all kinds of things, none of the parking lot, will break up the uh, the look of it.
The other comment was that all dumpster locations for the commercial and the residential right out from on the concern on the inside, to relocate.
What did we say, no thank you?
You may recall, Joel, that at one point, the office of the building can be put close to the sidewalk and parking back, which.
We've discussed it.
Right, so if, if you want to leave the building in the back, have parking in front, which, you know, like Mark said, let's, let's try to look for some kind of substantial landscaping buffers so that it's supreme.
I mean, we do have, we do have a landscaping plan, I mean, it's not a complete buffer. Uh, it's kind of, it will be very difficult to, to do it as a complete buffer, one of the agreements of the town and that this uh project should not need any variances, and that's why for this kind of freedom to make it work, with a lot of coverage and everything, because of and if we have to move it in and change it now, we're just making more.
It's pretty dumb, uncovered it, or is it?
Not covered, it was the, coverage was the main.
So the planning board have to get.
Well, have to make that change, just the project was presented, it's telling them not having requirements for.
That's an excellent point.
We should rewind.
That's, 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 that's a good.
It's a coordinated force, you know, it's something.
That's the other.
So yeah, look at that, and the planning board does have the uh authority to waive the parking requirement, so if it's lot coverage that's restricted here, that's one thing. But if you can't put in.
Yeah, it's, it's in the B zoning district.
Yeah, exactly.
Fifty two seventy five percent.
Yeah, and if you lose a couple of parking spaces so that you can provide, you know, more landscape buffer between that and the road, and the planning board will be fine with that.
But isn't there a section that's not in the water and still leave the script?
Yeah, it's the back.
The, the land having disorders. It's a, it's forced to.
Okay, so that has, that has to be taken care of.
Yeah, well, that's why water is an issue that needs to be resolved, I can't.
But they, they got an agreement from the board, that if they, they will do an extension if it goes through the planning board process and gets approved.
Right, so if the signboard approves it, but we can't, at this point. The planning board can approve it because uh, you can't approve something that could potentially have negative uh environmental impact under Seaker. So until the water issue gets resolved, I'm sure traffic can be mitigated, stormwater can be mitigated, all that can be mitigated, but right now there's no path forward to mitigate the potential impact on the water resources. And so the town comes up with a, a concrete solution to say, we're gonna put a wall up here and, you know, that'll solve the water situation.
So, it's, it's, if our zombies are there, it's there, I'm fucking saying. We're gonna take lead agency, but we can't produce, we can't really.
Well, you, you have to take lead agency, because if the board one person talk, if the board were to just say, we don't have water, we reject it. That would be a lawsuit and we would lose that very quickly, you have to, to build the record, take lead agency and go through.
Just, just be your own information, you're lawyers. Nineteen eighty, we started the, the well in lock filter, and we found zero water. Just to keep that on your head. I realize, I realize I'm no better. In nineteen eighty, ordinary, and we drilled wells and locked shell, right there, found zero water.
Well, that's one thing, the lead agency thing has been misunderstood.
Right.
The lead agency gives the most the authority. By taking, if we don't have it, we don't get that from, so, a very powerful tool, when we do it.
Thank you. I don't wanna get.
You're on a roll.
The question typically, who, the site plan installation in the five megawatt solar field zone and that's related to forty five locations, and credit, no, no, I don't know what to do.
What the plan is for it. Right, this is a uh, I'm sure it's identify yourself on the clock. And my name is Walter, you know, I work for you all. The uh, the map I'm showing you would show a maximum potential solar project on the closed town of Olberg Frank Brown landfill, which is somewhere between what I would call Shirley's junkyard and the solid correction facility up on top of the dome, can't be seen from anywhere without driving. The current use of the property, in case there's a concern about the change of use, is that that's where they take the dead deer carcasses. They're in on the road and they sit there and they're picking up. So the property is littered with deer.
Alright, what you can, you can answer to be wrapped.
Yeah, yeah, before that.
You said you would get it.
The size of the project will certainly shrink, unlike a traditional solar project where the town would be the uh, reviewer, and you'll have a right to review this at some point. Any uh solar project on top of a closed sanitary landfill is subject to a change of use application to the D E C, so the D E C will be uh, very much involved in reviewing this, because it's a landfill, the state's policy is to promote the uh use of closed landfills for other uses, and one of the landfill uses that the state is very much in favor of is uh building renewable energy projects. I know what Chairman Rosenstein said before, but I will say that every single goal, including Seaker, has an exception. Um, and the exception under Seaker is what's known as a type two action, where there is nothing you have to do, and there is no lead agency, and there is nobody involved. The state in uh twenty nineteen amended uh part six seventeen regulations for Seaker, and one of the things they added I wrote it down, uh, we'll see if you can read it there, uh, renewable energy projects, see if you can just read it for the record.
Ten, six, seven, point five, C fourteen, installation of solar energy, rated on twenty five acres or less, a physical alteration on a something.
Oh, it's less sanitary than.
It was sanitary.
Sorry, my.
Older?
So there is uh, there won't be a Seaker review of this project, because the state has decided that it's a type two action, so it's not subject to Seaker. So the two things that we would like for you to do tonight is to schedule this for public hearing, because this would be the absolute maximum array size. It will never be built at this size, because the D E C will be making a decision on how far away from each of the gas vents on this landfill the panels need to be. Uh, a typical distance would be a ten foot circle around each uh, each gas vent. There are over a hundred and twenty five gas vents on this landfill, when you're up there, it's like a couple of statues out there. And they're not built in a way in which they're in a nice neat tidy row, they're kind of scattered. The D E C allows you to go closer to those if there is still no gas being emitted from the landfill, but according to the engineer that did the closure of land for this landfill, which is Sterling Engineering Mark Millsbough. There are still reports being filed, there's still gas coming out of some of the vents, so that these panels will get rearranged to be at least ten feet away from the uh, each of the gas vents. The other reason that this will end up becoming smaller is because off of a landfill, when you're building a solar project using ballast, and you can't drive H posts into the ground through the uh, cover of the landfill, which is designed to keep the gases coming up through the gas vents, as opposed to smelling like the old Sullivan County use of landfill use this much. Uh, you have to build this project on ballast. Typically, what ballast means is you have concrete blocks like the size of that rock, uh, thick enough to be able to withstand the wind load, so the solar panel will be hit by the wind, couldn't get picked up and fly away. The application of ballast in most cases is acceptable up to like a fifteen percent grade, because you build a, a, a foundation under the back of gravel. All you have to go here. But the D E C, the D E C won't allow you on a landfill to build with ballast on greater than a ten percent slope, so they're out there at this point doing some field, uh, field level accuracy topo, and this part of the landfill outside of this plaque upside down portion line, I am confident is probably fifteen to eighteen percent grade, so all of these panels will probably eventually come out. But we think it's appropriate to schedule it for a public hearing, because this would be the maximum size that would be built. The other thing we would ask, since it's adjoining uh a state prison on that a state in New York, so that's one of the triggers for two thirty nine, is that you go ahead and send it to the county for two thirty. Those are our, our plans, that is. It'll be a lot more design, and we'll be back someday after the D E C approves the design to get your concurrence with or your questions about what the D E C.
Well, Julie had enough information for two thirty nine.
The county if it was gonna get bigger, the answer I think would be no, I feel if the county wants more information, oh, that's for I don't think they'll want more information, though they're very supportive of renewable energy development, and we wanted to make sure we showed a maximum sized project, so that if it's smaller, it'll have less.
I mean, put a quick down the lens and cap stable enough.
That'll be one of the things we need to do, uh, there'll be a requirement that we do some geotechnical testing of the cap, it's been in a long time. Typically, what happens to place the ballast is you get it delivered in an area like down here, which is part of the town parcel, but not under the part of the landfill where there's actually the cap. So your ballast is delivered on terra firma, that's not gonna disturb. Then they use a bow and plunger tire type vehicle to move the ballast to where it's gonna ultimately be placed, and they use a track like excavator with a hook to put the ballast in place, but they don't run back and forth, and they won't let them run back and forth with like track type uh equipment. There'll be a low inflation tire type carrier.
Like the swamp, swamp.
Swamp buggy, we would roll up your ribs.
Are staying the old time?
Do you, sir?
Stay watching it happen, they have.
The, uh, I, I don't, I don't know if the state has inspectors on site, at, at the entire time you're constructing it, but, um, Mark Millsbough, who is the town's closure expert on this landfill, has been consulted by the developer, and, uh, we would also ask you tonight to authorize opening an extra account, so we can handle, uh, your folks, uh, your professionals, so Dylan can tell you I really did disrupt the seeker. What's that? There would be no smoke needed, because the, uh, outside in the file, the, the, uh, drainage that has been mandated for the closure of landfill exceeds by tremendous standards, any drainage that would be required for a solar project. All of these black lines here, um, they're, they're like berms out in the landfill, so I catch and detain water, and there's, this blue area here is all just like a, an area around the outside of the landfill already exists, and pond up here, there's all kinds of drainage. There's nothing there except.
Well, the land does there, but they do a lot of properties.
No, the town barely, you want anything, just out, this is all, um. That's correct. This is, I don't know who the lead owner is, but this is the terrible junkyard property there that you drive through, you're all familiar with, I mean. And then, about right here is, uh, a solid correction facility, and between this project and solid correction facility, there's a deep gully. And this down here is cat room, and this is, uh, your sheep and its nets, you can't see, you can't see this from anywhere, so you wanna go there.
What about the house?
Way down here before the junkyard property, and this is all wood.
Will be about, you can't see it? Oh, no.
The prison sits approximately right here.
And you can always see a little bit of prison from certain spots.
Yeah.
You can see any of this, this is gonna be.
The town road. From the grid, all of that, well, that's abandoned, not that many town road.
It's on the town road in the down range. It's fairly passable, and apparently passable, but it is on the town road. But when you're at this site, looking out to the north, also, the only building that can see it is prison building in the roof of the attic, you can't see those houses.
All right, Dylan, your opinion on, you know, if you have to public hearing now?
I think you're gonna be fine, because we are looking at the maximum size that it's gonna be, and I think the engineering, what I looked at is, where it needs to be to give the public a chance to comment on it, because at, at worst, it's gonna get smaller, so it's less impact, so any impact that might be brought up is gonna be mitigated if there's any changes.
And the timing of the two thirty-nines is, perhaps y'all might have that, sort of that. Actually, when the two thirty-nine was, uh, early.
You have it for the D E C.
Yeah.
Or it'd be early this month.
Yeah, and I, I think like Walter said, it's, you know, the county, uh, thinks they can complete, because they want to, and that's up to them, but they, you know.
We're just trying to get as much out of the way here as we can, so that we can tell the D E C, everything's done except you, and that way we might get closer to the top of the pile.
Okay, most of you who have public hearing, if you're next to a law meeting.
Yes.
Second, third, or, and also most of you both are thinking, um.
If you wanna engage the town consultants on this project, just for the record.
And that would include the applicant paying for the fees from Mark Millsbough, who we've already met in touch with, he's been very popular today, but, um.
I think when it came up that the town didn't wanna pay for the, for his consulting.
No, we're not expecting the town to pay for that, I'm saying it should be Keystone, Delaware Engineering, and Sterling Environmental, because he will be primarily involved. It's the town-owned land, it's leased, so the applicant to the D E C for a change of use will be the town.
So, food, oil, grain, motion. Motion to, uh, engage. For second.
Second.
For favor. Appreciate it.
And I think that's a blessing.
No, definitely, uh, we're going to a, uh, executive session now, with the, with the board and bill.
Attorney clients.
It's like, uh, five, four, it's ready, five, three, two, one. Ready on.
So I can shut down Zoom, right?